Good evening and welcome to ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools' regular, monthly school board meeting. It is Tuesday, October nineteenth, eighteen, eighteen. It is six thirty-three. And again, we want to welcome board members, administrators, staff, and our community to this school board session. We have one every month, usually the third Tuesday of the month. And so, we are here at East High School, bustling with energy tonight. There are fan buses outside, there is parent-teacher conferences going on, and we are graciously thankful that we can host our temporary board meetings in our high schools. Last year, we were at Denfeld, and this year, we are at East. And hopefully, in the spring, or not even hopefully, we will be in the spring, in a district business service center up on the central high school campus. And so, we welcome you to East High School tonight, and I'll turn it over to Clerk Oswald to take role. Member Eater.
Present.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lafferty Kemp.
Here.
Chair Local.
Here.
Member Oswald, here I am. Member Zadowski. Member Samuel Isexcused. Superintendent A.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Finance Director Rudich.
Present.
And HR Director Severance Isexcused.
Yes.
And Board Secretary Paquette, here. And student representative from Denfeld, Sarai Cropper, here. And our student rep from East Isexcused for the other panel. Thank you, and then I'll ask to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on our agenda, I'm going to ask board members, we've had the agendas set for us, I need an approval. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So, member Lafferty Kemp, I need a second. Second. Member Zadowski, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero to approve our agenda tonight. Moving on, we are at number seven. No, we're at number five, the school and community recognition. So, I will ask Assistant Superintendent Bonds to help us with that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, and if I could add, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee members, if you are present, can you please join us? We, as friends, extended that'd be great because we do want you to at least share some insight on all of the things that happened recently. So, thank you for joining us. I will start. Thank you, everyone. Members of board, tonight, we honor the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Last month, for the second year in a row, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee won the National Johnson O'Malley Association's Exemplary Program of the Year Award for our region. Let's give them a round of applause for that. This award highlights the efforts of the parent committee and the American Indian Education Department to engage American Indian students in culturally relevant activities and events. The award recognizes the important work of the committee in supporting the mission of the Duluth American Indian Education Program to promote youth leadership, provide academic support, and to encourage career development for American Indian students based on American Indian values, culture, and language. The committee accepted this award last month at the National Johnson O'Malley Association Conference in Las Vegas, which I wish I were there. We want to congratulate you on receiving this award, and thank you for your leadership and support of the students in Duluth, and all of your leadership. So, thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. If you would, could you introduce yourselves, as well as just tell us a little bit about the award, and I see that you have a presentation for it.
I do. I'll let...
Oh.
Well, you all might already know me. I'm Badacy Quay Washington. I'm the coordinator for American Indian Education. And I cannot do the work I do without the amazing team that I have, our American Indian Homeschool Liaisons, and our advisory committee, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Thank you.
I'm Lydia Shinkle. I've been a member of the advisory committee for eight years. I've got a couple of middle schoolers at Lincoln and a Denfeld graduate. Go Hunter. And being a part of the committee has been a really amazing thing. We've been able to be collaborative with the district, with our students' community partners, and it's been a really great journey for our committee to really grow, thrive, and start some annual events that we have families that they look forward to every year, and get that family and community engagement with our school.
I'm Danny Duffy. I've been a member of the committee for fifteen, sixteen years, maybe. And I really truly believe that this committee, the one that we have assembled right now, is one of the best committees I've served on in all of the years that I've served there. And I would like to read an acknowledgement for our committee, if that's all right.
Please do.
So, I really wanted to take a moment today to say a few words about our parent advisory board. Our committee has some of the most dedicated people that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Our committee works tirelessly, volunteering hundreds of hours per year in the service of our children. Our members are very appreciated and have made positive changes in the lives of students throughout our district. As strong and dedicated as our committee is, there is one among us that stands apart, our leader, Angela Washington Buffalo. Angela has been leading our committee with a holistic approach to service delivery. Angela understands that success for our children is more than just academic support. It is the feeling of belonging and knowing that others care. It is a sense that they are not alone, and that there is a larger community that is there to support them, that they fit, belong, have strong connections with their culture, and are worthy of success. Angela has moved us forward and widened our perspective of healthy inclusion. When we were told that we received this award, Angela was very excited. When we flew to Las Vegas to accept the award, she brought along our custom banner that she had designed. This banner, she said, symbolized our connection with each other. Before we could accept this award, Angela received devastating news and had to fly home to be with her family, while Angela was holding her family together after events that no mother should ever have to endure. And in true leadership fashion, she thought of us and sent a text message congratulating us on our win, telling us how proud she was of every single one of us, and reminding us to take a picture of the award with our banner, our symbol of connection. To show how important Angela is to us, on our way back from our awards ceremony, we all passed that banner back and forth in an effort to get that on the airplane, in an effort to get it back here to Duluth. Without Angela, we were not coordinated, and we failed in our efforts and left the banner on the airplane. After a week and a half of attempting to get our banner back, one of our group decided to fall on her sword and admit to Angela that we lost our banner. Again, in true leadership fashion, Angela told us, "I'll just order another one." It was in that moment that I realized that our banner was not important. It was not the thing that showed our connection. Angela was. Angela is the heart of our program, the thing that keeps us moving forward. Angela, you are a very special person, and I look up to you. I admire your ability to lead with grace, poise, truth, and commitment. The strength of our Native women is incredible, tireless, selfless, and inspiring. On behalf of our entire parent committee, we dedicate this award to our leader and beautiful person, Angela Washington Buffalo. Know that you are never alone, that we love you, and keep on inspiring us, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Just let that settle in for a bit. It was an awesome recognition, and it's a favorite part of the board meetings that we consistently honor some community or school success stories. So, thank you. We're going on to item number six, and that's our public comment. So, before we begin that, Member Oswald usually will go over, always will go over, the guidelines, and we also go over our community vision and priorities for Duluth schools. Do you want to refer to this?
Yeah, let's do this first.
Yep. And so, community vision and priorities for Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievements, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and wider world. The eleven tools of civility. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. So, these tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, and show your evidence and share your reasoning. And so, we thank the eleven tools of civility, and Clerk Oswald will just go over some general guidelines as well. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. As a public comment information, can you mention to no one you sign up to speak at board meetings? Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting, listing their name and the matter on which you'll speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary over the raised underhand at the side of the room. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, that's me, will start the stoplight timer located right here when I remember. I try to remember. I try to be good. At the start of each person's time, I usually let you say your name and why you're here before I start it. A green light means go, a yellow light means to start wrapping up, and a red light means to stop. When the red light comes on, the chair next to you will gavel gently, signaling to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confirm their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant matters of administrative concern. And in the interest and respect for each public comment speaker, please hold any commentary or applause during the speaker's time until they are finished. Thank you. With that, I will call our first public speaker, and then I will say the next name is, like, on deck. So, our first speaker is Kevin Heschen. On deck is Brian Klemmick.
First, I want to thank the school board for allowing me time to address a very important concern. I apologize that I've been able to stay long because I have another commitment tonight. That's why I'm in the line. My name is Kevin Heschen. I had the privilege to teach orchestra at Ordene East Middle School for the past six years, retiring in June of this year. Last month, I spoke here of the urgent need to reinstate funding for the co-teaching positions in band and orchestra at Lincoln Park and Ordene East. Since there's been no movement on this yet, and I'm optimistic there will be, I'd like to speak once again on behalf of more than six hundred band and orchestra students in our middle schools and their four teachers. The Ordene teachers have conferences this evening, but wanted to be here, but they could not. As an orchestra teacher, one of my most important goals has been to unite students to achieve common goals. And that's what brings me here tonight, to bring all of us together to solve this problem I hold together. And I believe it's my responsibility as a concerned teacher and community member to convey facts and my own personal insights to help in moving in the direction of funding these positions. Now, first, the facts. Last spring, the middle school music staff was informed the co-teachers for band and orchestra would not be funded for the next year. The news was worse than we had expected because not only was the district not going to fund the ESSR positions, but they weren't going to fund the positions that existed for at least a decade before that. So, why are these positions essential? All right, many of us in the community remember when band and orchestra instruction began in the elementary schools. Now, the amount of time students have in band and orchestra when they start in sixth grade is greatly reduced from when they started in fourth or fifth grade. Most programs, seventy percent of school orchestra programs in Minnesota begin before sixth grade, in fifth or fourth grade. We're in the thirty percent, or lower thirty percent because we start so late. So, that's one reason we need the co-teachers. All right? Okay, good. So, how do you maintain a quality program if you start so late? Well, when Duluth decided to remove band and orchestra from the elementary schools, one of the things they did was to create the mirrored positions, the co-teaching positions, so that students could learn faster starting in sixth grade. Okay? Another problem we have is that in sixth and seventh grade in our schools, band and orchestra alternate with fiaits, so they only have music every other day. In a lot of school districts, they have it every other day. So, these are two of our problems. So, more facts, please look at the spreadsheet I gave you. It will show you that some of the programs are in the red, and different colors are different years. Green is the way we were used to having it for many, many years. Red is where we are today, and it's really quite a bit, especially Ordene Band. All right, personal insights, I've been able to sub it Ordene. I love seeing the students in. It was very emotional. It was wonderful to see them again, but I was saddened by the fact that they're so far behind. All right, yes, explain.
Oh, oh, I think I was gonna have a tight one. Ryan is our next speaker. Melanie Seaver is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Byron Klemmick, and I am proud to be the orchestra director at Denfeld High School and Lincoln Park Middle School. I'd first like to say how much I appreciate my administration at both of my sites for supporting me, speaking on behalf of my students and our community this evening. At Lincoln Park Middle School, I have the privilege of teaching beginning, intermediate, and advanced orchestra to the students there. Last year, we saw remarkable progress among our students. This was due to the fact that I had an outstanding co-teacher and artistic partner to collaborate with and create a thriving musical community within my classroom. We took students caroling on their instruments at the holiday time, brought in performers from the DSO, musicians from all over the country, and worked very hard to give our students opportunities outside of school. My co-teacher and I worked tirelessly to encourage our students to see beyond themselves and pursue opportunities in our area. Some of these opportunities include participation in the Duluth Superior Symphony Youth Orchestra Program, the Lincoln Superior Chamber Orchestra's Quartet Project Program, middle-level honors orchestra at UWS, and having several students awarded the Carol Donahue Music Scholarship. In all of these programs, the students at LPMS and DHS did not only participate, but in many cases, they were leaders and standouts among their peers. I'm so proud of all that we accomplished in my first year in this district. I will never forget the day last spring and early May when I was told the co-teaching positions would not be returning the following school year. My heart sank, and I knew that our students would not receive a high-quality education with a fifty percent reduction in FTE. Not only would this impact the students, but I thought to myself, "How could I do this alone? How could one person alone work to accomplish all that we had just worked so hard to create for our students and the community?" I pushed these feelings down and believed that I could reach out and attempt to intervene in this decision. After all, the co-teachers had such a positive impact upon students in our programs. Unfortunately, despite my attempts to reach out and inquire about this, no one offered any guidance or reassurance. Instead, I have been left to feel isolated, alone, and aboutable. I am so thankful for my colleagues outside of ISD 709 who work so hard to support what we do in other schools, and without them, I'm not sure I would be standing before you here today still teaching. The school year is in full swing, and I'm sorry to say that all of my feelings that I had and predictions about what would happen without a co-teacher in my classroom have been confirmed. This time last year, our students were starting to play their instruments with the bow. They also knew all of the notes on two strings, and now they're struggling to get through the notes on one string. It's impossible for me to differentiate my instruction because there are so many needs in the classroom, whereas previously, if a student had a need, the co-teacher could pull them out and give them some one-on-one attention. And this gave them confidence when they rejoined the group, and things moved along much more smoothly. I'm here to advocate for the return of this position and as it was funded prior to ESSR funds. And one thing I'd like to leave you with is I'm asking each of you to consider what your vision of music in ISD 709 looks like. If we continue down this path of not funding these positions, how are our groups gonna sound? If students in sixth grade are this far behind our seventh graders, what will our high school ensembles look like? If we don't do something soon, I'm worried that educators will start leaving the profession. I believe really strongly in my students and community, and thank you so much for your time.
Melanie is our next speaker, and on deck is Tyler Hamilton.
My name is Melanie Seaver, and I come to you tonight to also express my support for these co-teacher positions in the middle school music programs. I'm a product of the Duluth Schools. I graduated in nineteen eighty-two from Morgan Park High School, where I was fortunate to have not only excellent band director, but also a weekly half-an-hour lesson from an kindergarten woodwind specialist. And what did that do? I'm currently a professional flutist. I play with the DSO. I teach music at UWS and St. Scholastica. And I'm the administrative director of the Duluth Superior Symphony Youth Orchestra Program. Our program draws many students from the ISD 709 district, as well as surrounding districts, and I have a really vested interest in music education in this community from that perspective. We can argue, and we can present all the facts we want, but if we don't share the same vision for what instrumental music education does for our students and our community, then there will be no way to agree on the importance of these positions. Most of us don't know what it takes to master an instrument, to develop the skills and coordination, the thought process to play the even basic music. We may imagine that sitting in a classroom and learning about the fingerings, or how to make sound, or how to read the notes is all there is to it, but there's so much more. It's one of the most complicated human endeavors that exists. The process of learning and playing an instrument involves and consequently develops all areas of the brain, more than just sports, more than just math, more than just language. It takes all of the areas of the brain that each of those endeavors does, but it does all of them at the same time. And it combines them with coordinated intentional movement. This does not happen without an immersive experience. Learning an instrument and playing in an ensemble with others takes regular, long-term commitment to develop skills. It's a discipline of day in, day out, weekend, week out, month to month, and year to year. There's another special thing that happens with frequency of the musical instrument, instrumental music education. Students who in other areas may be shy, socially challenged, emotionally upset, find their place. They find their tribe. Sometimes, all that takes is little extra intervention from a music teacher. The instrumental classroom requires extensive differentiation by nature of the multiple different types of instruments that are being taught. Not only that, but each student on each of those instruments has different needs at any given time. In the current situation with the lack of a co-teacher in these programs, this differentiation is suffering greatly. With a co-teacher, students can be drawn out for different types of interventions, such as fixing the instrument, discussing a personal problem, you know, developing a skill that would be necessary for them to feel like a part of the community at any given time. Currently, a music teacher has to teach to the middle of the row. Those who are more advanced and those who are less advanced may end up not continuing in the program. I would ask for you to consider what our vision is and to reinstate these positions, if at all possible, to find the funds to reinstate these for the long-term impact of our program. Thank you.
Megan is the layer. Tyler.
Okay, just making sure.
On deck is Megan.
All right, thank you. My name is Tyler Hamilton. I just moved here just this past year. Son's enrolled here at Duluth East. And, boy, what she said was a lot of what I have written down. So, I apologize if there's any redundancy, but I'd like to first point out a five-year study by University of Southern California Brain and Creative Institute. It found significant differences in kids who learned and immersed themselves in an instrument. And it was published in the Journal of Development and Cognitive Neuroscience. Forgive me, I forgot my glasses. So... Similarly, Northwestern University published a seminar, similar paper in 2015, involving teens and cognitive improvements with musical immersion. But the point, the focus of this was, you know, at a younger age. You know, once they reach high school, just like a language. It's much easier to learn a language when you're a young child than it is when you're older. This is a little emotionally, so forgive me, but both my kids were diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade. And we were fortunate, the school district we were in, they had an extremely strong music program, starting in sixth grade. They tried out and were identified for an instrument in fifth grade, and then they immersed themselves in sixth grade. And the progression from sixth grade through high school with music was phenomenal. My kids suffered a little bit from being shy due to developmental issues based on their dyslexia. They were able to overcome a lot of this through confidence that they developed in band. And I owe a tremendous amount to the district for this. I encourage you to reconsider band at a younger age. I think it's extremely important. I know that Duluth is growing. One of the first things young parents, I'm not so young as you can tell, look for is the quality of the school district. I think, you know, it's important that we recognize that and what music brings to the local community. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the time, Chair Local. Appreciate it. I, my name is Megan Blair. I'm a parent in the district, and I understand you'll be reviewing or voting on an agreement for the School Resource Officer Program. I did review that contract as well, and I had a few comments. First of all, I just wanted to acknowledge that this body has been capable of wonderful things in the past in the face of uncertainty about children's exposure to toxic chemicals on the playground. This body was able to make decisive decisions to, in the face of that uncertainty, given that science was unresolved, to make expensive and difficult decisions. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge that first. And then, the second thing I wanted to talk about is just to remind this body that, a quote by Maya Angelou, who said that, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. People know themselves much better than you do, and that's why it's important to stop expecting them to be something other than who they are." I wanted to talk a little bit about the School Resources Officer Agreement because it's premised on only really one item, and that's to curb delinquency and crime in the community. So, I'm gonna reflect on the date in July, of July 7th in 2020, when the Duluth Police Department was allowed to come and discuss their statistics. And I just want to reflect on what these statistics show. Essentially, for the period 2017 to 2020, they have increasing amounts of crime in the schools. Just wanted to reflect on, in the community at large, crime in the community was decreasing at that time. So, that should be alarming a little bit to us about what that means. The other statistics show us that black students at Denfeld are five times as likely to be suspended as white students, and that at Ordene East, they are seventeen times more likely to be suspended than white students. This is harm. This is actual harm. And I think that it's harmful to potentially the most vulnerable members of our community. So, I think with that said, I just wanted to have this body reflect on the ability to make tough choices in the face of actual harm. That's all I had.
Lori Kavakovic, and on deck is Lisa Arnold.
Hi. My name is Lori Kavakovic. I am a Spanish teacher here at East, as well as World Languages Content Specialist in Duluth Public Schools, a parent to a high schooler and a middle schooler here in Duluth, and a graduate of Duluth Public Schools who began my Spanish education right here in eighth grade. proposed trimester wheel option that offers year-long instruction in core areas, and trimester options for other required and elective courses. One of the consequences of this model is that it does not allow for a proficiency-oriented world language program to be initiated in the middle school, thus eliminating a year of potential language study for Duluth students. It can be tempting to add, it can be a tempting question what one additional year of instruction can mean, and I'm pleased to have data to illustrate the impact of a sustained and continuous program of study. Last year, Duluth Public Schools began participating in the Minnesota Bilingual and Multilingual SEALs Program. This program offers high school students the opportunity to demonstrate proficiency in languages other than English. It allows students to gain recognition for their skills with certification on their high school transcript, as well as gain college credit through the Minskew system. Of the students whose proficiency was measured last year, 83% of students with four years of secondary language were able to achieve an intermediate, lower, mid-rating. This is an honorable achievement. It's consistent with the outcomes of a four-year program and meets the minimum qualifications to receive a Minnesota Certificate of Proficiency. The entry-level award in the bilingual SEALs Program, 5% of those achieved an intermediate high rating, as well as a gold seal recognition, which is quite an achievement. When measured against students with five years of secondary language, the number of gold seals, gold seal recognitions jumped to 38%. From 5% to 38%, a year makes a difference. It is the difference between not quite having skills that qualify you to be job-ready to being job-ready. The most important factor in developing proficiency is time. Students who have more time using the language do better. While this may not be surprising, what is surprising is that we are proposing to reduce our students' opportunities to develop higher language level skills by reducing the number of years that a world language courses are available to students. And while World Languages is taking a big hit from this proposed reorganization of the middle school, other elective and non-elective courses like health, physical education, industrial ed, fax, and more also face less time. This situation reminds me of going to the grocery store. The box of pasta that used to have 16 ounces now only has 12. Less time for students to go in depth, less opportunity for teachers to work full-time, less chance for teachers to build, to keep teachers in a building all day, building the fabric of a middle school community. These are pretty radical changes that are being made and that have big impacts on both middle and high school programs. And all this as the district develops its strategic plans? I wonder why bringing a seven-period day back to the middle school is not being considered to ensure students have access to a robust and inspiring education. Thank you.
(applause) Lisa Arnold, and then on deck is Jenna Matson.
Hi. I'm new to this. I've never gone to a school board meeting before. I just heard about this 20 minutes ago. My name is Lisa Arvold. I am a parent of a ninth grader, a sixth grader, and fourth grader, a resident of Duluth, moved here seven and a half years ago from the East Coast, and I'm here to express my thoughts about this middle school reorganization with the cutting of the global or the world study, world language requirements. I just heard about this in one of the conferences. I don't know how many parents knew about this proposal as well, and I was shocked just to have just heard about this, and this is going to happen. It sounds like it's, you know, almost certainly going to happen unless there's some big, you know, reorganization. But to echo the speaker before me, there's a lot of data that supports the earlier you start learning a foreign language, the better your proficiency will be over time. My take is, you know, do with this a bubble. We are not, we are geographically isolated. We don't have the most diverse population. We don't have a lot of exposure to other cultures and languages in our everyday life. I feel we need to like hold on and maximize every shred of exposure that our kids have to other cultures and other languages to the extent of our ability, and that is, the younger the better. These kids are going to grow up in a place where they don't hear Spanish, they don't hear other languages, you know, going throughout their day, and they may go to school in Chicago, in California, in New York. They may study abroad, and the better language proficiency you have and the more exposure you've had of other cultures, it snowballs. People are going to go out, their kids are going to graduate, they're going to go out in the world, and having, you know, having had the maximal chance for a language proficiency, exposure to cultures, maybe it might spark them to study abroad or have a, you know, an exchange in high school. Who knows what that could lead to? And then they're going to bring that exposure, that experience, back to Duluth if they end up coming back here as adults. And if we, if we cut that, that opportunity for them when they're young, it just doesn't, it's not optimal for their future. So I don't know if this decision is, you know, 100% set in stone, but, you know, just thinking about the opportunity for, you know, cultural exposure, diversity, we need to hold on to it here, because we don't, we don't live in a very diverse place, so it just doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. So I'm hoping that the decision will be reconsidered. Thank you.
(applause) And Jenna, and then on deck is Johanna Cummins.
Hi. I'm Jenna Matson. I am an alumni, 1984 graduate of Duluth Central. I went to Washington Junior Grant Elementary. I'm a parent of a recent East graduate, and I have a senior at East right now. I'm here to talk about music, and first of all, the purpose of public schools is to provide students with choices and opportunities for their future careers, community, and leisure, and music, I think, is all three of these. They can have a career, you know, in music or music-adjacent fields like acoustic engineer, architect, video game composer, sound designer, and more. We want our kids to learn the soft skills that music can, can teach them that are essential for employers like collaboration, self-discipline, communication, long and short-term goal-setting. We also want our kids to have lives outside of work, and nothing builds community like music. People with musical training play in regional symphonies, community orchestras, at serbans, at homegrown, with friends. People who develop musical skills use them for life. We want our kids to have those opportunities. But the current structure and staffing in our school district prevents access to quality music educational learning that will give kids these opportunities. We are leaving behind kids who can't afford private lessons. Having 35 kids in a room with a bunch of instruments and one teacher, no matter how good, and we have amazing teachers here, will not lead to success. The process of learning to decode written music while simultaneously performing a precise, fine motor task in rhythm while listening and responding to the teacher and fellow students while performing expressively is a huge, huge brain task. Music learning with adequate time for individualized, one-on-one teaching literally builds a more connected and stronger brain. No other endeavor comes close to what occurs in the brain when a musician reads and plays music. Let's leverage that to close the achievement gap by including all students in our music learning. In the past, music felt important here. Administrators and leaders were music boosters who supported the music learning of students, and it paid off with invitations to perform at Minnesota's music education conferences. All three high schools and four middle schools had full-time orchestra teachers who also spent, who spent their days teaching private lessons and orchestra and spent part of their weeks in their feeder elementary schools. I myself started public school lessons on the violin in the fifth grade in Sue Somerville, and I had private lessons in school for free until 11th grade, when I saved enough money to pay for my own lessons by working at McDonald's. We did not have money for lessons when I was a kid. I got into Lawrence University Conservatory of Music and became an orchestra teacher and violinist. My story cannot happen in Duluth today, but it does happen routinely across the bridge and superior in a Title I district. I can think of a dozen recent superior graduates who are pursuing music as a major, a minor, or who received scholarships to play in collegiate ensembles while pursuing other interests. These kids got their instrumental music education for free in the public schools. Why can't we do that again here? We can give kids opportunities in career, community, and life through quality music education, so let's restore and increase middle school staffing and fully support secondary music education in ISD 709. Thank you.
(applause) You let me know when you're ready.
My name is Johanna Cummins, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the World Language Department of Duluth Public Schools, representing German, Ojibwe, Mohan, and Spanish at the secondary level. For anyone who is unaware, Minnesota has passed a recent requirement for middle school art standards. To accommodate this, ISD 709's current planned response to the arts requirement is to remove world languages from Lincoln or Ordene East middle schools. The committee members in charge of planning and implementation include district-level staff and administration, and secondary-level principals, counselors, and teachers. After the end of last school year, no one reached out to invite one of us to weigh in during the decision-making process, as the sole invitee transferred to another district. During a middle school staff presentation before the beginning of this school year, one of the next steps listed was, quote, "to include content specialists and more specialized staff as committee members," end quote. The district's world language specialist was not invited to join until the meeting in late September, prompting her to initiate a meeting between district administration and the world language teachers. We are the licensed experts regarding language and culture. We are the specialists who will be able to tell you what the impact will be if language options are removed from the middle school. We are the teachers who will be directly impacted by reduced FTE, and the fact that none of us were included in this is an affront to us all. Knowing that ISD 709 touts community and collaboration while removing the linguistic experts from this equation is utterly disrespectful. And beyond all this is the concern we hold for our students who will bear the brunt of this decision. In the ISD 709 Teaching, Learning, and Equity Updates sent out on 10/7/22, Assistant Superintendent Bond stated, quote, "That the district has several large acts and plans, including World Best Workforce, Achievement, and Integration, and the American Indian Program Plan." As well as, on the ISD 709 website, welcome page states that, quote, "Duluth Public Schools is working to inspire every student to achieve their potential and preparing students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world." The World's Best Workforce was developed in 2013 under Minnesota Statute Section 120B of Section 11, and has five primary goals, including school readiness, reading at grade level, closing racial and economic achievement gaps, readiness for career and college, and graduating from high school. Learning a second language reinforces a student's knowledge of their primary language and improves reading comprehension, literacy, and fluency. Students who can read better are more likely to achieve higher test scores, graduate on time, and are better prepared for post-secondary life. Consider the perception of education in the United States. Do we want students in Duluth Public Schools to reinforce English monolingualism, leading to linguistically exclusionary practices and ethnocentric viewpoints? Do we want to reinforce stereotypes of closed-mindedness and ignorance of indigenous and international cultures? Or do we want to better prepare students to be citizens of a global society? There are alternatives to removing language from the middle school curriculum. Please consider these alternatives when finalizing the decision, as families throughout the community will certainly be just as outraged at the lack of choices and opportunities this provides for our middle school students. Reinstate the seven-period school day. If their primary concern is the cost related to this, it's time to find a better excuse.
(applause)
I'm not thrilled to follow that, but...
Please consider these alternatives when finalizing the decision, as families throughout the community will certainly be just as outraged at the lack of choices and opportunities this provides for our middle school students. Reinstate the seven-period school day. If their primary concern is the cost related to this, it's time to find a better excuse.
I'm not thrilled to follow that, but... My name is Hayley Sagathis, and I am here because of the eighth-grade world language classes. And I don't mean that I'm here to talk about it right now. I am, but I mean that I am literally here because of the eighth-grade world language classes. If we had an offered eighth-grade Spanish back in the seven-period day, I don't know where I'd be. My friends all signed up for orchestra, which is a great class, and music is wonderful, as we've heard all night. I signed up for orchestra, because my friends did. And I hated every second of it. I never learned to read music. I just kinda sat in the back and did whatever. I was last chair for three years. But we had a seven-period day, and that afforded me the ability to take a second elective. In this case, I chose Spanish. My Spanish teacher was full-time in the middle school, there when I needed help in the morning, there if I needed help after school, and it was her enthusiasm for Spanish that made me go, "This is pretty cool. I think I'm gonna take this in high school, rather than trying to keep up with orchestra and my friends." In high school, I took four years of additional Spanish, bringing me to five years total. It was the enthusiasm of my Spanish two-and-five teacher that inspired me to become a Spanish teacher. I don't know where I would've went if not for her, but I would not be in my eighth consecutive year teaching Spanish in our district. I would not have helped the academic excellence online school take a Spanish one canned curriculum and turn it into three levels, which bring supplemental students in, generating more income for our district. Taking away the eligibility of a world language Level V class increases the amount of time and money every ISD 709 graduate spends, should they choose to continue their education. Through my five years of studying Spanish, I was able to obtain eight credits through UMD, and as a college freshman was able to jump right into advanced Spanish. Since the cost of tuition isn't going down anytime soon, based on current math, those eight credits saved me $3,888. There are other pathways and options for us to help find success. As a school district, when did we decide that it is no longer our responsibility to give students as many options and pathways to success? No longer our responsibility to help them attain the resources needed to further and support their education. When did we settle for the idea that cost will prohibit students from their higher education? When do we acknowledge that we are not following our promises of creating lifelong learners and productive global citizens? And how do we find that acceptable?
Ready? Should we just go? Okay. I'm Shawn Mullin, and I'm the parent of a sixth grader at Ordene who was in the Lowell Immersion Program for Spanish immersion. And in support of continuation of the immersion program into middle school, as well as the opposition of eliminating the world language program from middle school, there are a lot of reasons to cite, but in my short time here, I'll focus on equity. We seem to now recognize that not every student is college-bound, whether for economical reasons or otherwise, and we've adjusted educational opportunities for these students to be able to learn technical skills and trades. Well, let me tell you this: Spanish and bilingualism is a technical skill. The best educational gift I will ever give my child was to put her in the Spanish immersion program. As a fluent speaker, she'll have opportunities in a career in nearly any field, with or without a college degree. I went on Indeed.com, and I searched for jobs requiring Spanish fluency and English-Spanish bilingualism, and nearly 300,000 job listings came up, just in the United States. These jobs were in the fields of farming and agriculture, education, community and nonprofit work, government agencies, legal, medical, entertainment, therapy, customer service, proofreading and publishing, content writing, art, marketing, technology, travel, research, public health, project management, just to name a few. There were things such as Foreign Service Counsel or Fellow for the U.S. Department of State, bilingual crime analyst for the District Attorney's Office, public affairs specialist for the U.S. Small Business Association, and many, many more. And the commonalities in all of these jobs is that they had good livable wages and good salaries, and none of them had a minimum educational requirement. So bilingual student of this school district who can't attend college has an excellent chance at these careers and the other 295,000 jobs that were listed. The last thing that I would say about the language program is, and this is anecdotal, but I'm confident that the numbers would actually back this up if I had them, but in my conversations with other parents of the students who were in the Lowell immersion program, who are in sixth grade, at least half of them are now at Marshall School, because there was no Spanish immersion continuation program into middle school. So if we're interested in keeping our enrollment up and attracting enrollment in the public school district, the immersion program is an excellent and effective way to do that. And I don't feel like the district considered creative solutions when trying to figure out how to continue it into middle school. And before anyone tells you that it didn't get continued because there weren't enough committed students, I can tell you that there weren't enough committed students because there's not a transportation option to Lincoln Park, which is where it was going to go. And transportation was the number-one thing that parents brought up in parent meetings, and the school district did not offer any solution for that. So I personally would still like to see my child in an immersion program, even in seventh grade, and so I hope that this district continues to take this seriously and figure out a way to continue the immersion program into middle school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frances Wittenberg.
Good afternoon, or actually, good evening. ISD 709 superintendents, school board members, educators, and most importantly, parents and guardians. My name is Frances Wittenberg, mother of three children, one recently graduating from Duluth and East. I also have two, Rowan and ISD 709. Highly active community member, Air Force retiree, and I'm one of the Human Rights Commissioners in the city of Duluth. The Human Rights Commission mission is to promote cultural diversity in Duluth, promote the elimination of hate, prejudice, and discrimination against persons of groups based on race, gender, identity, or expression, religion, sexual orientation, ability, or other status, educate the community on issues of discrimination and cultural diversity, advise the city council and city on human rights issues, and promote the goals and objectives of the Minnesota Human Rights Act. Most importantly, advocate for the families and students in our school district. On behalf of the Duluth Human Rights Commission, we request a school board and a superintendent to attend one of our upcoming monthly meetings to present the ISD 709 data and previous findings involving students from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds within our school district. This meeting would be a public educational informational session to understand a student's success and discipline rates. The data presented would guide commissioners on how to move forward with an extra plan before the end of this year. The Duluth Human Rights Commissioners meet every second and every month at 5:30 p.m. at the City Hall, Room 330, located on 411 West Bruce Street. I look forward to helping our community move forward, and thank you for your time.
That concludes our public comment, although we always offer if anybody would want to come and speak. Just state your name.
My name's Laura Kimms.
Can you spell it, Laura?
K-I-M-M-E-S is my last name, first name Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me come and speak. I wasn't planning to come to speak because I was at conferences today. I teach currently orchestra at the middle school at Ordene East Middle School, and I was teaching last year with Kevin Heschman. And last year, I remember Kevin and I were talking, and even with two people, we were saying, "This job is a lot." You know, and one of the things I reiterate, or I want to support what Melanie said, what Kevin said, what Byron said, what Jenna said, it's so true, and anybody else who spoke up for music. We care about the kids, as you all do, and as all parents, and I just had some parents that I have conferences with. And we need help. We really need help, and we need to have co-teachers back, because one person can't do the whole thing in the way that we would like to, because we want quality programs, and we try to do quality programs, and we do that in the time we have. But frankly, the other thing is, and I watched Kevin do this last year too, he was a .6, and he was putting in full-time hours, full days, full evenings, you know, just out of the goodness of his heart. And I think that's wonderful to do that, because I think that's a... We all work, and I know we all do, or are a lot more than what we're signed up to do. And this year, I'm technically a .6, but they added a .1, which is just temporary for this year. And now it's on one person, full-time job, and I've been spending full-time hours there too, but we do it because we love the kids, and we support the kids. And I've also worked with the youth orchestras for 20 years. I was conducting the symphonia, and so I know Melanie, and I know Kevin, and I've worked with Kevin, and Melanie, and Byron. And please, if you can, listen to what Byron and everybody is saying, and not only listen, but if you can take some action. It would really benefit the students. And I have, we have worked... I had the good fortune of being in this... I student-taught in this district, actually, way, way back. That was many years ago. And I was in the youth orchestras myself, and so I was in what we called the Camelot Bureau, too, because at that point in time, all music teachers were full-time. And they had to be, to really address the needs of the students. And I've seen throughout the district how it's just been shrinking, shrinking, shrinking with the points of what teachers do, and with what we can do for the students. And it's almost like the frog boiling in the water. You don't know until you're in it and doing it, you know? And for the benefit of the students, that's always what we say. We say, "For the benefit of the students." And I think that's so, so important to take that into consideration. And I also wanted to say, too, that I had wonderful mentors and teachers, both in Duluth here and in other places, and that inspired me and two of my sisters to become musicians and professional violinists and singers and that sort of thing, too. So I know what music can do, and I also know that not every student can take private lessons. And they want to learn. They're there. The numbers are there. The students are there, and we see that. And we want to address all the needs of all students. I think that's important.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you for listening to me, and I really appreciate your concerns.
Moving on to our agenda, we now move to number seven, which is reading communications and petitions, and we have none. Those would be letters that would come to board for our comment, or our consideration, or our thankings. So going on to number eight is the report of the superintendent. We have reports from the student school board representatives. Then we do move on to the superintendent's report, and we then will review our scheduled meeting events for now. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Magus.
So we'd like to begin. We have several things to talk about, and we will be talking a little bit about SIR allocation of resources and our strategic planning, so some of the things that were discussed in public forums that are going to be addressed likely there, too. But let's start off with our student representative reports. And Ms. Crawford, would you like to begin?
Yeah. Okay. Hi, it's Soraya. I'll be the representative for Denfeld. Our fall parent-teacher conferences have started Monday, on Monday, October 17, Tuesday, October 18, Tuesday, October 25, and Thursday, October 27. For our fall sports, our boys soccer team, last Thursday, so they've been giving back to the community. They helped out for the second harvest Northern Lights food bank, where they packaged 1,200 bags full of meals for students around the area. Our volleyball girls team, they helped to raise donations for cancer causes. They wore pink shirts, and they had... And they sold cupcakes at their games. Our football team won our homecoming game in April, which was awesome. Junior Alyssa Doyle was named Minnesota Soccer Hub Player of the Week for September 26 through Tashania Holmes in Dakota Blackwell proudly represented Denfeld at the Duluth School of American Indian Education. Their families in their home tribal communities with distinction at the National American Indian Education Association, student gathering last week in Oklahoma City. Our fall play, She Kills Monsters, will be in our lecture hall on November 10 through 12, at a time that will be determined later. At our school, we have started DASH, which stands for Denfeld After School Happenings. It started last Monday, and it goes from Monday through Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:30 at our media center. It allows for students to get tutoring, and students from UMD, St. Galastica, and really all the colleges in the area to interact with students and help them with homework or just getting to know what college life is like. And it also provides a safe place for students to be after school, along with bus cards for transportation if needed. Our scholarship night was last Thursday, where we had different organizers come into our school and just present to seniors with opportunities to help them navigate college and being able to pay for it. Our FASFA night is coming up on the 27th, where our students and families will get together and be helped fill out FASFA with the help of admissions counselors from the universities in the area. Our juniors took the piece out on Wednesday, October 12, and our juniors and seniors and their families were able to attend the Future Night on October 17, where they gathered in the commons and were able to explore different career options that they would like to pursue. Our fall ball is coming up on Saturday, October 29, from age 11. We are now selling tickets for them, and it will be held at the deck. And lastly on my list to talk about is, from October 18 to 19, our seniors are being pulled down to the Career Center and Media Center, where they are being helped on their college applications. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Soraya. And Superintendent Magus, Eileen Knopf's report will be read by Member Lockwood. Okay, thank you.
Well, I will try and do Eileen justice. I have known her since she was in kindergarten at Lester Park, so I'm channeling her, or I hope she's channeling me as I read this. Homecoming, well, this was written by Eileen. Homecoming was last week. We had an assembly at the beginning of the week introducing our candidates, and then another at the end of the week, where Zion Dusumi and Ella Gudavoe were crowned as king and queen respectfully. I've known Ella since she was a kid here, too. Throughout the week, we had many fun activities, such as mega soccer, which is essentially soccer with a giant ball that you can't kick, a movie night, an ice cream social with board games, and bingo, volleyball, senior night, a soccer game, and of course, all the homecoming festivities on Friday. Out the tailgate, there was food, snow, and a dunk game with homecoming candidates in it. Following that, our homecoming football game and senior night, where all of our senior players and cheerleaders were recognized. The game was close all the way through, ending in a 19-20 loss to Denfeld. It ended up being a very positive experience, though, with our student section leaders meeting Denfeld's and actually enjoying each other's company. Then, right after the game, was the homecoming dance, which was held inside East due to weather. Turnout was good, and through varying music tastes or hard-to-please, I thought it was a very fun playlist. The whole week was put on by association, and I think they did a lovely job. I chaperone those homecoming dances. They are really fun. Whoop, she... I added that, too. I enjoy chaperoning homecoming. Student form started this month. We had a good number of students who applied and were able to get their feedback on school so far this year. October is East for Peace Month, and we had a peace walk on the track this morning with a speech by Keith Peterson about peace. On the third, we participated in the National Blue Shirt Day for anti-bolting, and in the coming weeks, we will have a movie night as well as a donut day. The volleyball season is coming to an end, with our last home game today and our last game for the season on Thursday. The season has been really fun regardless of wins and losses. East loves to watch their volleyball team, and the team is sad to see their seniors go. The girls' and boys' soccer season just ended. The boys' team went further than anyone thought they would. The seniors on both teams are going to miss playing with their friends and making memories. Key Club has been very, very productive this month so far. They have students volunteering at various Halloween events, including the Haunted Shack and Boo at the Zoo. They have over 100 members right now, and many other volunteer opportunities in the works. I am happy to report that, from what I've seen, the school lunches have improved this year. Eileen's done a good job advocating on that issue. Not only do there seem to be more options, but there are also fuller plates. That's submitted by Eileen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board... Sometimes the board likes to give feedback to our student reps. Any...
I have a follow-up question. So the She Kills Monsters play, I was getting it on my calendar earlier, so it's November 10 through the 12.
Yeah.
You said? And I also wanted to add about the Key Club for East. We were invited to go to the Convent Walk to School Day, and the Key Club was there. And they just created this really awesome human tunnel for our kids to walk through, and it was really kind of a special moment.
I would just add that, you know, I know you do such a great job covering Denfeld, and Eileen does East, but I know as a board member that scrolls through a lot of Facebook pages and websites of our schools to see what activities are happening that I can attend, that there's so much more. So I, you know, I thank you for giving us a picture, but I encourage the public to also go on each school's Facebook page and website. There's... They have the calendar of activities, and I know many of us as board members try and get out to all the schools for many things, so appreciate you capturing so much, and know, I guess, again, for the public that there's so much more going on at all of the schools.
Thank you. So Superintendent, your report.
So as I mentioned, we start with our student reports, and always great to hear the really exciting lively things going on at the school. I was at Denfeld and ran MPU the other day, and yesterday I think it was, and it was here for homecoming on Friday. Lots of great things going on in the schools. Also, got to touch on our strategic planning, just a quick update on where we've been, what we've been doing, as well as some things related to school and community connections, as well as a very brief update on what we're considering for our school board work session, which is coming up later this month. So related to strategic planning, our strategic planning team, the broad team, met on Thursday, October 6, to review our stakeholder survey feedback related to our students, staff, and family-desired daily experiences. There's a lot of work put together by the team, and I especially want to thank Adele Wellens for the work in putting together promotional video and lots of noted on social media, trying to get those surveys returned. And I know not everybody responded, but it was considered a very, very good return rate compared to other districts. We had over 1,500 students respond, 1,000 families, over 1,000 families, and 535 staff members. So there were quite a good turnout, and we did take the board feedback that we should incorporate voices of our elementary students as well. So there was a focus group held with elementary students, at least one that I'm aware, where they were giving their feedback, as well as outreach to our English-language learner families, translation into, I believe, six different languages, about many languages, and much work done to try to make sure that we're reaching out as fully as possible, as well as supports from our integration specialists. So that information was used to further refine our draft of desired daily experiences and begin a draft of what's called a theory of action. So basically, if we want X, Y, and Z for the experience, then what is it that we need to do? What is it that we need to believe in? And the link to the site is there, but some of it comes down to making tough choices. And I know that's something I'll address in a moment, but we do have limited resources as a district, and it's important for us to make choices related to what are the key priorities for us, and so that's something for us to be thinking about. Our next three-hour session is going to focus on the construction of our district vision card. That will be what we're looking for and moving forward with that, but we'll be developing a one-page document detailing the key measures and metrics for successful implementation of the desired daily experiences. So if we have the experiences that we're striving for, how are we going to know if we're making progress towards those things? That's going to be really critical. We can't just say we're going to provide a more engaging learning environment and then not have a way of measuring it to see if we're making progress towards it. So that is some key work that will be done on putting together that three-year operational plan that we're working on. And then we'll also be refining our... And then we'll also be refining our theory of action and desired daily experiences. And I want to say too, we've been working very closely with the Regional Centers of Excellence. We, as you know, we were identified as a district and we have a number of schools that have been identified for need for improvement. And the work with Teamworks as well as the state through the Regional Centers of Excellence, that work is paramount to the success of our district. And we heard from the Human Rights Commission too about disproportionality. We have, as we all know, unfortunately, some pretty big disproportionate outcomes for our students. Just as a couple of examples, not to be negative, but looking at our state rates on reading for our third, fourth, and fifth graders on the MCAs, the average for the state is 54, 52.4% meeting or exceeding standards. We're doing well in general with our students in Duluth where we beat 57.6%. But when it comes to the achievement of our black students, third through fifth grades, the state average is 30.8 and our district average is 14.1. So we have some glaring disproportionate outcomes in areas that are already disproportionate for the state. And it's important for us to be very thoughtful about how we're allocating our resources. I would, I would love to be able to say yes to so many things. I would love to be able to, you know, we talked about class size reduction and that's, that's important. I'd love to be able to fund a seven-period date, for instance, but a seven-period date is going to cost over a million dollars in addition to what we're already spending. So it'd be a million dollars additional resource when we're looking at a shortfall of approximately $2 million related to the ESAR spending that we're investing now, in addition to $2 million worth of technology funds that, as far as replacement cycles for that. So it is important for us to make sure that we're engaging our community, that we're engaging our stakeholders through a variety of processes, including our strategic planning. And one other really important piece that Mr. Bonn and I have been working on, we heard from our American Indian parent advisory group, tribal consultation in use of the ESAR funds too. There's, there's an importance for us to reach out to historically underrepresented communities. And our tribes, as we know, are also historically underrepresented. So we have intention with a couple of follow-up meetings. We've met more than we have ever in recent history with, with our tribe as far as making sure that we have those schedules and meetings because we need to take that into account when we're deciding where to put our funding. Again, so many things that we would love to be able to spend our money on, so many things that are vitally important. You know, the ESAR spending on the positions for music support, for instance. Though the, the lessons were reduced in previous budget cuts prior to ESAR spending, but we did put additional money in to catch students up because we realized after the pandemic, after the distance learning, that many students had fallen behind. So that was intended as a one-year ESAR expenditure to help catch kids up based on previous spending. But it's important when we're examining everything to see what do we prioritize and what do we feel is most essential. I, I personally, I've had my own kids go through music programming. I think it's incredibly important. I'm a former Spanish teacher. I think both of those areas are really, really important. And I also think it's important for us to look at things like interventionists and MPSS systems and how are we making sure we're catching the kids that are falling through the practice when we have some really disproportionate outcomes. So those are some of the things that it comes to very, very hard choices. And we appreciate that the board is, is going to be interested in learning more about these elements. And I know at our next HR, Business Services Finance meeting, we plan on sharing more about the ESAR expenditure, which positions are ESAR funded and what the initial intentionality is related to those positions. Like most districts, there's, there's a pretty big spending cliff. And we heard, you know, we hear Executive Director Zunich report on it. We heard CFO Erickson report on it. But there is a need for us to scale off of that spending. And it's, it's hard to make those choices, but it's necessary for us as a board and for us as administration to really be thoughtful and comprehensive in the way that we consider those things. As far as school and community outreach, one of my goals for this year, and I know we have, we're going to be meeting regarding my evaluation and regarding my annual goals, but my main goal this year, whether it's official or not, has been to spend more time in schools and also to be very intentional about spending more time in the community. And so this year I have been spending much more time in, in my school visits during the weeks and trying to make sure that that's reported on during my, in my reports to the board, but also in my updates for staff too, which is today, for instance, my, my update tomorrow. I was here at East and I saw these students in the manufacturing class here manufacturing the new clock hands for the Denfeld clock. What a cool opportunity when you're out there in schools and you're seeing, you know, you're getting to dance with preschoolers. You're getting to see East students construct clock hands for the Denfeld clock as a collaborative process with, with some of our manufacturing groups. But it's really great to be in the community. We also have kicked off our education after hours sessions this past week. And those sessions will be held in a wide variety of community centers throughout the, throughout Duluth. Usually two, two a month. Every other, every other week, there's a kind of cocoa and cookies and conversation opportunity. And we also want to make sure that we're purposely focusing on intentionally inclusive activities, thinking about historically underrepresented voices. And so we, we kicked it off actually meeting with our trans Northland parents. And so we had a private group of, I'd say probably 20 people expressing concerns and thoughts. And I, we, after a couple hours of really great conversation, I think that we, I think that I had an opportunity to really hear what people were really thinking and people had an opportunity to truly express whether they were students that spoke, parents of our students, and also many staff members too. And so making sure that those voices are heard is part of my intentional outreach there. Then we have our school board work session coming up on the 28th. And some of the suggested topics thus far that Ray Weiner's working on for the session include superintendent evaluation process and annual goals, making sure that those are set. Finalization of that three-year board action plan that we started on last time. And
I was on our website.
I, I, after, after the dance competition, hopefully dancing is part of my annual goals. But I'll find out. We're also talking about starting a community financial advisory committee and the work needed there because all of these things we've talked about are going to require more funding and different funding. And I think that we need to really seriously explore an operational levy for the coming, coming year. That's going to require a lot of work. But if we intend to, if we intend to do what we are currently doing without further deep cuts and if we're thinking about doing other things to support our kids, we don't have the finances currently to do that. So if the, if we, if through lobbying, we end up with more finances, that's, that's one hopeful way. But if, if not through lobbying, I think we need to really explore referendary work. And I've begun that work with Executive Directors Zunich as well as the rest of the senior leadership team and we'll, we'll share more later. But part forming a financial advisory committee is something that many other districts do where they bring in people who are financial experts in the community. You know, CFOs from some of our area businesses, maybe a local banker or two, and people who, who understand finance to help have kind of a second eye on what we're doing and also be able to give some informed, moderately impartial perspective on where is the district and what are we doing and what are we asking for a lot of. That's, that's something that we're looking at for as well. As well as we talked about safety plans for board meetings and making sure that we're thinking about safety. You know that there, with these school board meetings, there's been a lot more volatility with protests of different sorts. And I think with another election coming up, we need to be thoughtful around that as well as thinking about some of the board elections we see too throughout the state where there's really strong campaigning from various kind of extreme political elements that sometimes turns into severe disruption and sometimes safety issues in board meetings throughout the country and state. So we want to have a little conversation there. Then on a personal note, that's also somewhat professional, I just want to let folks know that I, I did purchase a home a week ago today. And so finally, after, after renting for a couple of years in Duluth and trying to find a, a place, we're, bought a place in the central hillside. And the reason, one of the reasons why I wanted to be in central hillside, not just location proximity and being able to get out to Park Point and things like that, but in downtown. But also I feel that the center of our city is, it represents both east and west in many regards. So I think it's, it's, it's a place that's representative of some of the needs we have in our community, the diversity, the, the, some of the social issues that are more apparent sometimes in, in the center of our city. I want to make sure that we're, that I'm representing all of Duluth. And I figured that, that living in the center of town is, is the best way to do so. So I'm about to block off the, the center line between East and West. I won't say which side. But that's part of me wanting to be permanently invested in our community. And that concludes my superintendent's update. If there were any questions?
Any questions? I don't have any questions, but I just, I, you know, I wanted to say I really appreciate you taking the time to do those. What do you call them? Coffee?
After hours. Education after hours.
Education after hours. That's just really great to hear. Thank you for taking that extra effort.
And then I'd also like to say thank you to Adele and Caddy for supporting, during the coordination and note-taking and coffee or cocoa, cocoa providing and stuff.
I, I just wanted to inquire about notes being taken during our work sessions. I will be on the work with a tent or somebody at least being able to fill me in on what happens in my, that and stuff.
Sure. I think sometimes because it's more dialogue-based, it's a book. It might be good for me to set some schedule time and chat with you. I'd be glad to have time to, I know that Mr. Weiner, Dr. Weiner has also offered previously when people have not been able to attend to have like a catch-up session. So maybe.
Oh, he's in hospital?
Glad to come.
I have seen, you know, Dr. Weiner does give us a kind of a good report, but it's bullet points and it's subject matters. And I'm sure we'll get that if I can, but yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, that's probably prior to that interaction.
Yep. I just, not, not a question Superintendent Magus, but just a couple of comments too. One is the, on the, the concept or the idea of having a financial committee made up of community leaders. I think it's excellent. We've done that in the past while I've been on the board and I know it happened before. And so I, I think that definitely will be good to bring some folks back. And your involvement with leadership at Duluth certainly, I'm sure, be a good connection to some up-and-coming new folks in the community as well. So I was glad that you're going to do that. I also appreciate the community meetings that you're doing and that you're holding them at our community centers and in, hopefully, somewhat partnership with our community. And I look forward to, you know, getting an update from you on just what you are hearing out at those meetings and I got clear if you want board members to attend some of them. You know, certainly some of us I'm sure would if that was something you'd like.
I'd be glad to reach out to the board and I hope you have some conversation I had too at the, at the board retreat. We did talk about the difference between like my site visits. Sometimes I think site visits, it's nice for me as superintendent to go out and chat with a variety of our, our employees and students. And I think sometimes they, they open up in different ways just when I'm hopping around. But I think for the community conversations, that would be very appropriate and something to consider having if you're rotation of board members who are interested. It's, it's really insightful.
Yeah. And, you know, I just got it from background and I know Member Kirby could talk about this too, that when, when we used to do something called the Think Kids Initiative, many of us did attend many of those meetings or all of them in some, in some of the years. And it, I think, gave community members an opportunity to also ask us as board members questions they might not ask you or comments as well. And so I think, you know, let us know about.
I would love to. And also part of the thought behind it is, as, as people know, I, I started during the pandemic. I was hired in March of 2020. And some of the things that I normally would have wanted to do as a new superintendent, like these types of region, regional, you know, community gatherings and getting to know people, that wasn't something that really could be done. We did some things through Zoom as far as opportunities, but it's not the same as being able to be in a room for a couple of hours and really talking and getting into some deep, deep conversation.
And again, thanks for reminding us too, the hard choices we made because of our finances is something that, you know, you can't, you can't share with us enough. And to be bold tonight to say that there are hard choices, we're going to have to make hard choices. We're going to have to listen. We are in a study phase and a, a working through. We've had some, you know, of our district leaders come together on some of these tough choices and these tough directions and continue to meet with the, the staff and the people involved there. So I, I know it's not a done deal for where we're going in a number of these decisions. And, and we also are, are lucky that Duluth did get a substantial amount of ESAR dollars due to our population, our student enrollment, our, our other data collected to determine that need. And we have, and we'll hear next month, they, where we've really used that money to benefit our, our students, our kids in, in those core areas where we really do have to make those decisions based on what our students need as the core place that they come from. So thanks for reminding us and, and, and sharing that information. And we will continue as a board to, to, to listen and to have reports from our, our expert staff.
Thank you. And along that note, just as a foreshadowing, and I'm pulling up.
That's an English term. I love it.
Yeah. The, we do have our World's Best Workforce meetings coming up. There's the Community Engagement Session, which, oh, my calendar just flipped forward here. The World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee meeting is 5:30 to 7:30 on Monday, November 7th. We're going to be doing a deep review of our, our data, looking at disproportionality and looking at those, those efforts. So thinking about various entities that might want us to come present. It might also be an opportunity for people to come listen there and engage with other community members in, in that examination of the data. And what we do is we, we're required to have an advisory committee meeting first where we are listening to the public and working with the public. And then we'll be sharing with the board later that, that month, correct?
Yes.
Do we have those dates? Can you give us, November 29th?
November 29th.
Is the advisory or that's the committees?
That's when we meet for our, maybe it would be a committee, the whole, the annual meeting that is, it changed format a little bit in the past two years because of the COVID crisis, but it's meant is that the review by the school board of our World's Best Workforce results.
Presented to the community.
That's correct. And prior to that will be several community conversations, the World's Best Workforce Advisory Meeting. And then there'll be additional meetings set up superintendent shared. We also had an opportunity, our opportunity will be provided to our tribe, local tribe, and that's going to be occurring strictly as well. So we have several opportunities that we will, we will be providing opportunity for input for various World's Best Workforce. And then the community presentation will be held officially on the.
And the last.
Yeah, just a clarification. I, I know I saw a notice asking for advisory, people interested in being a part of the advisory meetings.
in being a part of the advisory meetings. Are you also, I know in the past, there often was a couple of people from, it was intentional to make sure there was representation from every school across the district. And is that, you know, a couple of parents from every school?
Yes, that's what we're striving to accomplish. So, and we are, we have sent intentionally invites to, again, the local tribe, we've sent it to other organizations, the UNWSB, we've sent it to other, again, organizations to make sure that we are really intentional and trying to make sure that they have an invite from us, not just receiving it through our other communication that we're sending out to the general public. So we are really trying to make sure we have representation there. We're trying to make sure that all of this is heard. And again, we're going to make sure that we provide intentional opportunities with the general public tribe and others outside of the advisory committee.
So seeing no other questions, the next thing on our agenda is just a review of the meetings and the events. And Executive Secretary Bicat sends us that every week on Fridays, and it's in our board book, and it's just part of our agenda under 8C. And so it just, one of the things is just a reminder that the school board work session is Wednesday, October 26. Mr. Superintendent Magus, I think you said the 28th. I just, you could have, I could have heard it wrong, but just, just kind of saying Wednesday, October 26 is the workshop at four o'clock. And it has been changed to here instead of the United Healthcare Offices. So we're also looking at an EAC Advisory Committee meeting, and it's at the Minus Peacemakers Building this Thursday. And then if we look at the week of October 31 through November 4, it's the Policy Committee on November 1. And it is the monthly committee, the whole meeting on, also on November 1. And just a note, I think I could get this right. Kurt Boswell could correct me. But because we are having a November 29 call meeting, we are not having the call meeting on December 6. I think that was kind of our.
That's our hope.
Our hope. That's our hope.
Right. But it depends. We also have many.
Irons in the fire.
Many irons in the fire. We would prefer to, because our teams are also pretty, they work very hard, but if there are certain issues that are pertinent, we may need to do that.
Okay. That was a little premature, but don't get your hopes up.
I did note that in my superintendent's update, I also have the 26th, 28th, 26th. So Secretary Bicat, could you please update that board book one more time with a revised copy of my superintendent's update for the correct date? And also for the board, my weekly update that I sent to you, because of the short week this week and because of my movement, I'm hoping to just produce a special two week board update this week as opposed to having something this past week.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda is our report of our standing committees. So 9A is the committee of the whole. And again, the board book has the attachment from the agenda that we had on October 4. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds to just give a quick overview for our community that's here and for our community that watches us on our YouTube site. And again, just a reminder too, that the committee meetings, we have the committee of the whole, the policy, and then the HR business is really where things get discussed, questioned, rethought. And then at the board, we hope that when we review these, we just simply make that part of our acceptance of those reports. So attending committee meetings is also really exciting. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you. And as the Chair of the Board indicated, we would really appreciate and encourage everyone to take the time to really take a look at our committee meetings. The committee meeting that took place on October 4 was robust. It's only one item, and it was regarding class sizes and enrollment. But it was a probably two and a half hour discussion regarding class sizes and enrollment. We know that there's a lot of questions and wondering regarding class sizes and why they are different across our schools. And so we provided a lot of information related to that. And we also provided a lot of detail on why it is so that east and west sites of town have different enrollments. And so I really encourage the community and our staff to, you know, take the time to listen to that two hour, two nap hour YouTube video and just listen in on all of the reasons why. So I'll start by sharing that we are really excited that our enrollment has increased from last year. We are up around 209 students from last year. So our current enrollment as of then was 8,170 students. Really excited about that. That information will change over time because as the year progresses, we do have students who go in and out. And unfortunately, the enrollment number does go down towards the end of the year. Our students matriculate and some of them graduate early and take advantage of other opportunities. But we are, at this point in time, really excited about the increase. And that shows that, you know, in our community really embraces our school district and values it and see it as a great resource. So thank you to all the families who take advantage of our public schools. And with regards to class sizes, I'll quickly go down the list because this information, again, you can hear all the details, but regarding class sizes, Ordean East Middle School has an average class size of 29. Park Middle School has an average class size of 22. Denfeld, 22. East High School, 28. So that's the average class sizes for our secondary sites. Stowe Elementary, 18.8, I know that sounds weird, but it's 18.8 students is the average class size. Lakewood, 25.2. Lor Matt, 17.8. Myers Wilkins, 18.7. Piedmont, 19.4. Homecroft, 23.8. Condon, 23.1. Lester, 27.7 is the average class size there. Mole, guys, that's three schools in one. The English class size average is 24.7. Ojibwe, 18.3. Spanish is at 23.4. So you will see that there is a difference in the class averages across the system. But what we shared during that committee meeting is that there's a lot of information that you don't see here. And there's a lot of reason why. Many of our schools receive additional funding that allows them to lower their class sizes. For example, many of our schools who have significant, a number of students who are pre-reduced, they receive additional funds in the form of title dollars that we receive from the federal government. We also receive, or they also receive additional resources from the state in the form of ed dollars. Those funding sources allow schools to then provide additional classroom teachers that then lower their class sizes. And that's the intention and, you know, purposes of those resources. So when you see and hear that Stowe has 18.4, they may receive a significant number of extra dollars that allows them to then reduce their class sizes by adding classroom teachers to a third grade or secondary classroom. And that's how those funds are used. And it's with intended purposes. Again, many of those sites that they receive pre-reduced lunch, they also have significant needs that are different. And the purpose of those dollars is to reduce class sizes and to also provide additional interventions and support. So some of those sites may also have additional resources in the form of math interventionist, reading interventionist, you know, and so forth. And that's what the purpose of those dollars are meant to be. So I really encourage the community to, you know, spend two hours to listen in and hear in greater detail on why there is a difference in class sizes across our community. But we also recognize that, that we do have some class sizes, particularly at some of our east side locations where we too believe that, you know, we really need to consider as a district, how do we address that? We have some of our sites where there are, you know, 34, 35 students in a classroom at East High School, for example, in some classrooms. We, as a school district, have to, you know, say, is that okay? You know, can we do better by our students? As you've heard from me, our teachers and parents, you know, we have to be really thoughtful about how we allocate resources to our classrooms. And so I'm looking forward, as Superintendent shared, to a lot of discussion regarding exploring how we can get additional resources for co programming in our sites in the form of operational referendum. Because I too am fully aware that the budget that we have at this point in time just really doesn't meet the need that exists out there. And we have more need than we have resources for. So I'm looking forward to more conversations on how we identify those critical needs and priorities and then how we allocate resources to our students. So I do encourage again the community to take a look at our community. And that is my report. Thank you.
Board member remarks or questions?
I just really appreciated. It was a robust meeting and just a lot of really great information, a lot of good discussion, and just really appreciated that opportunity to have all that background information going into that meeting as well to study. So, thank you.
So we'll take, then we'll go on and this month, the information, I don't think there's anything that we need to necessarily have on the consent agenda from this committee of the whole, other than just accepting the PowerPoint, the presentations, the enrollment numbers. And so next on our agenda is be the Human Resources Business Services Committee. So I'll turn it over to the Chair of that committee member, Peter.
Good afternoon or evening or whatever it is. We had our HR Business Services Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 11. And we started out with a, we had no guest presentation for this meeting. And for our departmental reports, we started out with Human Resources. And as several other committee members have said, you have access to the whole bundle when you just go on board book. So I'm going to go through just a few things. So for our HR report, a few things of note is that the HR manager and the HR director and Director of Finance and Business Services, they have begun to meeting with each principal in all of our buildings to start reviewing staffing and budgeting lists for their building. In addition, those members are also meeting with department, departmental heads to go through that same process. They're working through this so that when we begin our budgeting process in January, they will have met with everybody and have gathered the appropriate amount of information and data. The other thing of note was number four, having to do with the contract negotiations. The National Conference of Firemen and Oilers Bargaining Unit voted on September 24 on the district's proposed agreement. This proposal did not pass with the Conference of Firemen and Oilers. So the Human Resources Director had been in discussion with the union leadership regarding that step. There's also some information in there on hiring, retirements, resignations, and all of that. Basically, when we look at how employment looks, we're still short of paras, we're still short of building engineers, we're still short of bus drivers, and we're still short of child nutrition people. So next, we moved on to the Finance Department report from Executive Director, right? It's Executive Director. Don't forget that executive part. We had a verbal report that really talked mainly around the process that you're going through currently with the building principals and all the other departmental heads about budgeting. Also an update on our auditing process.
Yes.
And that audit should be coming in December.
That is correct.
Great. Okay. Next, we looked at our enrollment reports. And as Assistant Superintendent Bonds talked about, we are currently ahead 211 enrollment increases from our last academic year. When we look at how we budgeted for this year, our budgeted ADMs was around 7,994. And right now, our projected ADM is around 8,057. So we're at about an increase of 62, almost 63 ADMs. We look forward to having Sheila Oakes come and speak with us about our child nutrition departmental report. An important note on this report is that we still have a significant number of students that are eligible for free and reduced meals that have not filled out the application. So I know building principals are working hard on it. I attended conferences at Piedmont. They were at the front door with that information as people came through for conferences. I went to another one at Lincoln Park, and they were also working really hard to get students and families to be able to utilize that benefit. Of note also is that the fruit and fresh fruit and vegetable grant at Myers Wilkins, that was a grant of about $25,000. This allows us to serve students a fresh snack a couple times a week. And it also has enabled us to incorporate fresh garden food, produce into the mix. So that's fantastic. Next, we have our Facilities Department report. And as Superintendent Magus spoke of earlier, the E students are working on making some of the clock, what are those things? Arms?
Hands.
Hands, arms, legs, whatever, for the Denfeld Tower. The Condon Park Window Replacement Project is almost done. New Denfeld Bed Bathroom should be done by late October. And Mr. Spooner is already looking at LTMF projects for next summer and which ones are going to be most important. Hopefully, before I'm off the Duluth Public School Board, PSS Track Lane One ponding remediation might be finished. No promises. Construction on the hill is going great. Building operation is going well. And that really takes care of facility management. The Technology Department report, Bart was not with us for this report, but you can see if you look on board book, some of the numbers having to do with our cybersecurity, which is important because that goes back to our insurance. There is some work that's being done by Artic Wolf on our cybersecurity, also looking, doing work with Benson Electric to look at wireless access points, some new Cisco infrastructure, new AV equipment that will be used for a DSC school board meeting space. And then some, also some new Panasonic video security equipment for our middle schools. Then the transportation report is also, this looks, this seems to be pretty consistent. We are still arriving for our two new buses. Hopefully, March. Okay. And then there was also a change in the software being used for bus routes. So, and then of note that there are daily changes on a total of 434 individual routes. That's great. All right. I think that's everything. So that's everything in our departmental reports. We have a recommended resolution, which is acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. You can see that we have quite a few donations of notes in this resolution having to do with the unity in our community event. I had the pleasure of seeing Lindsay Kern recently at Chamber Breakfast. She was, she's a Kern and Company, very excited about the unity in our community event and really looking forward to helping and supporting us in the future. She had nothing but great things to say about it. So that was wonderful to hear. What we're going to see on the consent agenda is our HR Staffing Report from Finance. You're going to see the Financial Report. And there was, just to bring your attention to page 15, that has to do with the hourly substitute pay rates. We saw this last month, but there was a change, and I believe Director Severance talked about this, a change to the sub bus driver pay, just to make some adjustments for that pay.
That we didn't have a rate for sub bus drivers because we didn't have any sub bus drivers. But we had somebody, a retiree expressed interest in substitute bus driving, and we were very grateful to have that offer. So we created a new substitute bus driver rate.
All right. So moving on from there. Also included in the consent agenda will be our fundraisers. A lot of Lakewood students working hard, I think, to get to Wolf Ridge. We also had no bids, RFPs, and quotes. We did have contracts, change orders, change orders and leases. The City of Duluth School Resource Officer FY23 contract and a change order for a boardroom AV installation. We also had some miscellaneous information that does not require us to take any action. We also had some miscellaneous information that does not require us to take any action, which would be Duluth Public Schools, the update on the properties, some great pictures of the DSC building and as we progress through getting it up there and built. We also have some expenditure contracts that were signed. We had no cost contracts. We had no revenue contracts and grant applications as well. So that was our HR Business Services Committee meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much. No questions, I just wanted to express appreciation for the written reports that we get ahead of time from Business Services as well as HR, you know, all six of them. It's just really helpful having that ahead of time and then being able to, for those of us not on this committee, kind of follow as we're listening and following the YouTube after. So just thank you for that.
And of note, I forgot to bring this up, but during the contracts, change orders, leases, Assistant Superintendent Bonds videoed in from places undisclosed on vacation and also talked to us about the process of coming to this contract and then also, also introduced some additional information related to that contract, which included a rubric and then a form.
I would like to say that the members of my leadership team are very bad at taking vacation and need to, need to take the time. And we appreciate you phoning in and being a part of that and same for everybody. But we have a very committed team. Just really appreciate that everybody's going extra mile and joking, of course. We just want to make sure that people do take vacation here and there. On, on a somewhat related note, I know we've had a lot of conversation related to teachers on call. And we talked a little bit about sub, subrates and things like that. And I just wanted to, to note that our, our fill rate, daily fill rate for subs this year compared to last for the previous week, and this has been pretty consistent, is twenty to forty percent higher each day with teachers on call than, than last year. And last year definitely was a hard year, over twenty to forty percent better each day than previous year for those corresponding cases.
I just have a question after just listening to the HR business, and it really comes under the Child Nutrition Report. And I just, we, we have four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine students that have not filled out a form. And I just wondered if that's students that, that we, we don't assume that they qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's just almost five thousand families that have not done the form, whether we know they would be qualified or not. I think when I listened to the, to the meeting, it, it sounded like that we thought that these forty-seven, forty-nine families would qualify if they would turn the form in.
That's a great question, Jill. And I think when Sheila comes to see at our next HR Business Services, I was going to ask Simone to see if we couldn't have her do a little explanation on that. Because that, I'm not clear on that either yet, Jill. Which is why I kind of beeped over the top of it.
Yeah, and do you know if at conferences that are happening in most schools now this month, or I don't even know the dates well, if they're doing similar strategies about having someone at the front door and checking with families about the forms?
I don't want to confirm that, but I know all of our schools are, you know, engaged in different efforts to get those forms in. As I shared earlier, when students qualify for free reduced lunch, that also is connected to the amount of resources we get for Kind One funding, for our comped funding. So it's really, really important that families complete those forms. And if they qualify, it raises, it raises the number of students who then qualify for those resources and then our funding sources increases. So it's just really critical to overall funding for the district.
And then too, I was just, just do a shout out to Teresa, which is not here tonight, but also some of the creative ways we are, across the state, across the country, shortage, staff shortages are incredibly scary. They're scary because in some cases, I think, when you don't have significant teacher staff, parastaff, nutrition specialists in the kitchens, it's a safety concern for students as well. And so I just heard the discussion at the HR Business about being at Cloquet's Job Fair, having a table at Woo at the Zoo, talking with local, partnering with the work, the city workforce with Ms. Porche, and, and just really intentionally getting out there to continue the drive to find workers. But it's, when, when I talk with other school board members, it, it's a concern across the state.
Actually, because of some of our staffing shortages, particularly there were some staffing shortages at Denfeld that we're concerned about trying to make sure that, that those are well covered. Executive Director Severance is, is stayed back at, at UHG and was working on some things late in the evening. So I talked to her about, you know, if she, she, she needed to, to focus on those things rather than come to the board meeting. If that's, if that's what she needed. So I see us doing more than we ever have, yet it still isn't quite enough to fill the, the needs. And we see that across the state, as you mentioned. But very much appreciated that greatly dedicated team, special education, HR. Everybody's working really hard to fill those needs.
And just one last comment on teachers on call too. As a sub, subbing here, they really do reach out to the, the sub list and keep you connected. They send you newsletters. They send you information about professional development opportunities for becoming a better guest teacher. So, you know, if, if, you, you might not see dramatic increase. I mean, we're, we're just talking about the shortages across the state and country in, in positions. We have to know that that's happening as are substitutes as well. So I think that their presence in our district, their, their connection to our, our lists of workers, both clerical, para, and teacher, I, I think if we just give them time to work in our district, they'll be seen as a respected employer, partner with us, and hopefully we'll, we'll see that benefit. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing that end of that committee, turn to nine C with Policy Committee and ask the Chair, Member Lachlan Kemp, to review the Policy Committee.
Great. Well, the Policy Committee meeting met on Tuesday, October fourth. And again, it's visible by YouTube on our website, the, the discussions around that meeting. We reviewed a policy for second, and all of what I'm going to be talking about will be on the consent agenda as well to, to be voted on. But we reviewed policy for second reading, five three five, that's service animals in the schools. And again, appreciate Director Jason Crane at that meeting with us and kind of walking us through many questions we had. It was a really good discussion. I just think the, the one thing, as we've discussed this both in May as well as at this past policy meeting, we all just better understand how you are working with families and with students when there's a need for service animals. So I really appreciate just learning more myself. But again, the purpose of this policy is to establish parameters for the use of service animals by students, employees, and visitors within school buildings and on school grounds. And really, the main difference from when we reviewed it the first time back in May was some of the forms were taken out and just because documentation happens in some other formats. And, and so that was one of the main changes. But, so we'll be having our second reading on that one. And then policies for review. We have policy one oh one, legal status of the school district. And we had some good discussion around that too. And again, the purpose of this policy is that a primary principle of this nation is that the public welfare demands an educated and informed citizen. The power to provide for public education is a state function vested in the state legislature and delegated to local school districts. The purpose of this policy is to clarify the legal status, status of the school district. So that is for review. And then one oh one is the name of our school district. Duluth Public Schools is the name of our school district. And so this policy is just to clarify that name and, and making sure that we're using it uniformly throughout the district. And then the next policy is complaints, students, employees, parents, and other persons. And again, the purpose of this policy, one oh three, is the school district takes seriously all concerns or complaints by students, employees, parents, or other persons. If a specific complaint procedure is provided within any other policy of the school district, the specific procedure shall be followed in reference to such a complaint. If a specific complaint procedure is not provided, the purpose of this policy is to provide a procedure that may be used. And because we are not changing anything in these policies, we just need to review it. And I did get that confirmed by Terry Morrow with the Minnesota School Board Association, who, as you know, is kind of the expert on policies. He's a lawyer and he does all of the trainings for NSBA around policies. And so he did confirm that if we're not doing any substantive changes, if we're just changing policy numbers, that it can be done in one meeting and it can be on the consent agenda. I just wanted to confirm that with board members on that. And then the last thing we talked about was regulation and six twenty R, credit for learning students experiencing homelessness in foster youth. And we did have our new Families in Transition Coordinator, Lisa Larson, there along with Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, Jen Larva, as we review that informational item. So all of these will be on the consent agenda.
Any questions? Discussion, reflection, and policy? Thank you. Thanks to our committee work. That brings us through all of the agenda number nine, A, B, and C. That brings us to number ten, any general board committee updates? Anything from the committees we serve that we got appointed to in January? Seeing?
I was just going to make a little plug for one. I, I'll give a longer update at the next meeting, but I serve on the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund. And we are beginning that process with our principals. On, on November second, the Chair of our committee, who's a retired teacher, Steve Schollmanbauer, and I will be doing a short presentation to the principals so they understand the process for the grants that all of our school staff can apply for. And I was just checking the website. So Adele, thank you for getting the Duluth Community Fund information updated on there and, and keeping that under the community section. So that's what I was playing with on the website, not asking the Superintendent to dance. But so I look forward to giving more updates on the Duluth Public School Endowment Fund. And it's just a, a great group of retired teachers mainly involved.
And so that brings us to the consent agenda, number eleven. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Member Oswald moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Derek Eater seconds our consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting everything that's on our consent agenda for tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to number twelve, resolutions from committee reports. So we have the acceptance of donations to be read, and then we vote on it by roll call.
Resolution, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota's statute four six five dot oh three requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in school. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. We have on here donations from Bethany Chris's Shelter, Chris, a dad at AG O'Brien, Parents and Grandparents at Homecroft, Duluth Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd, St. Germain's Cabinet Company, Lindsay Kern, Kerning Company, Marketing and Special Events. And Lindsay Kern's and everyone else's were all donations for the Unity in Our Community event, including the Duluth Area Chamber of Commerce, Miners, Inc., Essential Health, JCPenney Salon, Community Action, Hopefield Co-op, Texas Roadhouse, St. Louis Hospital, ACO, Grand Marathon, Great Lakes Aquarium, St. Louis County Public Health, Duluth Police Department, Blackwoods, Burns Pepsi, and Family Freedom Center. And I'm sure there's been the others that have not been reported yet. So therefore, I move resolution S P dash ten dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Eater seconds that and roll call to accept this.
Member Eater?
Yep.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lachlan Kemp?
Yes.
Chair Roll Call?
Yes.
I say yes. I say aye. Member Zdowski?
Yes.
And the resolution matches unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to Agenda Item thirteen, special resolutions and action plans, thirteen A. Member Lachlan Kemp, will you read that resolution?
Sure. Okay. Resolution, S P one oh two two three nine two oh, I move, be it resolved that the Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, a cost incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Association of Metropolitan School Districts twenty twenty-two conference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Zdowski seconds. All those in favor of, of moving this resolution to authorize school board members to attend the AMSD conference, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to resolution thirteen B, the resolution for Minnesota State High School League. So E dash ten dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine dash five eighteen. I move the resolution of governing board supporting Form A, the application for the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of Duluth Public Schools recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of Duluth Public Schools supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activities. So I, I move resolution E dash ten dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine eighteen, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Member Lachlan Kemp seconds. All in favor of accepting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to fourteen. Any questions? Or anything under other? Seeing none, I look for a motion to adjourn. Member Oswald, the second?
Second.
Member Eater and all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned by a vote of six to zero. We are adjourned.